One minute left, but I think we've got what we're gonna have. So. Are you ready to go? Okay. Welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Delray Oaks City Council. Your roll call is.
Councilmember.
Preston.
Councilmember Hallard.
Here.
Council. Early.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next is public comment, general public comment must deal with matters subject with jurisdiction of the city and the council that is not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on that is not appearing on the agenda may do so tap, may do so now. There'll be a time limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. Public comment is open. It seem none, move on to presentation, we have Dave Stole, General Manager of the Water Resource District. Dave, it's all here.
Thank you. I'm doing the smartened Pacific rope and they said you could arrive at eight thirty, you're the last on the agenda, so I appreciate the. This is an overview of what we call the water allocation process. You'll get a sense of why we're doing this in a second. But this is the shortened version, we had a very lengthy meeting which I'll show you on our calendar. Your city manager did attend, so there's a lot of detail that we're not going to subject you to this evening. But next slide please. The first, another, a next one. So when we talk about allocations of water, you may recall that at one point you had an allocation, jurisdictional allocation of water. It has since gone to zero, and so you're unable to issue building permits that might result in new uses of water until we refill that account, and this is the process relating to refilling that account. Now back in the day, back in the eighties, we actually allocated all of the existing supplies to each of the jurisdictions. And we found, for example, in certain cases, we would have a city council or a mayor that says, oh, don't give us a big supply, we wanna, we don't wanna grow, so reduce our supply, and then the next team would come in and say, you should be short of this, you need to give us more. But at the same time, we're also discovering that the supply numbers weren't really solid. And as you've noticed through time, what we thought could be taken from the river got reduced, you know, got reduced further, and then there was a regulatory limit. What could come out of the seaside basin got reduced, and got reduced, and that was adjudicated. So we moved to allocation of new supplies, when a new supply comes online, we say, all right, how much of this new supply should be made available to the jurisdictions? And how much should we allocate today, and how shouldn't we allocate there? On the next slide. So why do we allocate? Because of the scarcity of supplies, because we've had those orders, order ninety-five-ten and the cease and desist order. And over thirty years doing it, we found that it's very helpful to be able to count water and really know where it's going, not just by jurisdiction, but by type of use, residential, single-family residential, multifamily residential, so we have great amounts of information. Whereas many water agencies would love to get to where we are. Oftentimes, they look at overall demand and they say, well, we're about eighty percent of our total supply, we need to start building new, new supply sources. But we really know where it's going, so we don't wanna change that, we don't wanna kind of move away from that level. But it will still be a little bit invasive in people's lives, which we'll talk on the next slide. I'll do the next one, but this one's good, so we're not giving you water, we're basically putting a deposit of an allocation of water into your bank account or your water account. And what you will do through the permit process, somebody wants to build something, they'll come for a building permit. You should say, well, you need a water permit. And how much water do you need? And they'll say, I need a half an acre foot. Or the car guy will say, I need one tenth of an acre foot, or whatever it was. And you'll say, where is that water gonna come from? And you say, I'd like an allocation from you, and you do a water release form. They show up in our office with the water release form, you say, ah, we see your plans. You sized it correctly, you have the water from the city. Here's your water permit, they come back, get a building permit. And that's shown in the next slide. And so that interactive process will eventually result, as you build more housing or infill, that your allocation will start approaching zero, and if you change your plans and you say, well, we're gonna do more development in the non-four-door part of Delray Oaks, well, that's gonna be served by CalMam, and we'll say, okay, you have a new need. We'll go through another allocation process, so the idea is to get water out in the hands of your jurisdictions, and then the secret grows faster, or grows slower. And not just give everybody kind of a proportionate share today, and have some jurisdiction hoard theirs, and another one say, well, I've run out. Uh, next slide. So what brings us to this? Well, we've got the pure water Monterey expansion coming online in just about a year from now. And so we're trying to front-run that by getting allocations in place to signal to the jurisdictions that you will have water, you can work with your developers on longer-term projects. But we're still gonna be hamstringing a little bit, uh, next slide. Well, I'll get to the hamstringing in a second, and so this is the schedule, we had a two-hour meeting, as I mentioned, your city manager did attend. There were five city managers, planning directors, representatives from, from county. And we walked through very methodically how we forecast future supply, how we forecast future demand. How we have control over data that we can break that into jurisdictional numbers, and that each jurisdiction grows at a different growth rate, and that has importance as well. And then how we build up to what we believe future demand is. Invariably, we will get pushback. But, you know, certain cities said, oh, we're gonna grow so fast, we only had water, you know, different different views, but we have method to, to the way we do it. We started our visits to the city councils, the October-November line there, uh, we did, uh, City Monterey about two weeks ago. Got three city councils this week, and the airport board, and then two more after Thanksgiving. It will pretty much be done, but you as policymakers all deserve the chance to hear what in summary, what your city manager heard for two hours in a very painful, uh, lengthy meeting. So we'll be developing ordinance for first reading in December, second reading in January, then effective in February. So at that point in time, it becomes effective, and the cities now know how much water they have to work with. Next slide please. But it doesn't solve everything, the cease and desist order and the moratorium on new meters will remain intact until we lift it, so we wanted to get this process out of the way. And then probably January, originally returned to shoot before Thanksgiving. But we're waiting on a decision from the Public Utilities Commission, it still hasn't come out. But in January, the State Water Board is expecting us to come visit them informally, and then formally, probably March-April with what's called a petition for modification of the outstanding order, the cease and desist order, and the theory there is when pure water expansion comes online, that'll be the fourth year in a row that there's no trespass violation on the river. So wanting to say, we're not doing the crime we shouldn't do at the time. State Water Board will say, well, if we take all the guardrails away, and you can set meters now, do projects, are you gonna be back in the principal's office next year? So we also need to demonstrate to them that we've got at least a bridge of water supply or a permanent water supply that'll keep us out of trespass for this foreseeable future, we believe we're at that point with the expansion. But until we remove that CDO, we're stuck with no new meters. Um, yeah, okay. So the next question is, how much water is there to allocate? And this table, the next one, is just a simple chart of all the different supplies, next slide please. The supplies that we have, that there are legal rights to California American. And I can tell you that there's disagreement over the value of two of these supplies, one is aquifer storage and recovery. And the other is the pure water Monterey expansion. Where California American has provided testimony that, oh no, those aren't reliable, and here's why, and we provided counter testimony, actually five different meter meters provided counter testimony. But we trust our numbers, we trust fifty-nine years' worth of data on the aquifer storage and recovery project. And we trust Monterey One Water, their knowledge, their engineers, their experience on pure water Monterey expansion. So this is how much water you have, so the supply side is kind of taken care of, that's what we're looking at. So then the question is, we need to look at the demand side. And doing, excuse me, water demand forecast is really three simple steps, how much do we use today? How fast are we gonna grow? And for a stated period of time, how, where does that growth rate take us to? That'll be how much our total demand will be over that period. So to ans, to answer the first question, how much do I use today? We've got very good data, next slide. And we've been tracking demand, and this is actually a proxy for demand, this is production, this is water supply that is fed into the distribution system to meet customer demand, so there will be losses along the way. Truck hits fire tightrope and things like that happen, so we really have to look at the front end, how much supply do you push into the system before loss and before theft, um, and those kind of things, so we treat demand really as a supply number. And it's what we call production for customer service, or production for delivery for customer service, but it's a measure of demand, and as you can see, it's been in decline for the last twenty-five years. And relatively steady through the last ten, in between ten thousand and nine thousand acre feet per year. Acre foot being football season, so it's a football field with a foot of water. Now interestingly, uh, this is only through twenty-twenty-three, no, yes, twenty-twenty-three, and we just finished the twenty-twenty-four water year, and for the very first time, and I don't know if you saw it, but we've learned weekly that for the very first time, the man went under nine thousand acre feet per year to a level last was in nineteen fifty-seven. So we we definitely, um, steadied out. Yes, we defined from last year. But you don't just look at your current year, so we, next slide, we've looked at the last ten years, the last five years, and the last three years, and we land on the last five years. Interestingly, if we conclude the year that just closed, that five-year average would drop about another hundred and twenty acre feet, so we're actually using an order number. But it's conservatively old, so that's how much we use today. Next slide. And we also know how that water is used, so we're about two-thirds residential and one-third non-residential. And then by each jurisdiction, we have the data on how much is used, and the interesting thing here, you can tell Delray Oaks is a veteran community. Because you show up on residential pod, and you're barely a sliver on the non-residential. And San City is kind of the opposite. So, you know, this data is important to us because we know each jurisdiction has different policies, different room for growth, and different different commitments to grow, I guess, is a way to say it. So we start with that data of the ninety-five-fifty-seven, how much we use today, and then we say, okay, how much is each of these jurisdictions going to grow? Next slide. But before we just take the supply available minus the current demand and say that's available for allocation, we recognize that there's certain limitations. In a dry year, the expansion may have a hit of about three hundred and forty-five acre feet. You can make some of that up in the winter months. But we have to kind of accommodate for that, we also recognize that aquifer storage and recovery is still on the front end of the cycle and hasn't built up a lot of storage and ground. And we recognize too that CalMam wants to do an in-return flow or storage, um, project in the seaside groundwater basin. So we say initially, as of today, let's pull back a thousand acre feet. And we really only have one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine acre feet of surplus. So now we know how much we could allocate. And then we go on to the next step, next slide. And we say, well, really, how much do the jurisdictions need, in our opinion? Next slide. So that's the how fast will we be growing question, next. And to do that, we've got some tools to answer those questions. We've already talked about establishing today's water demand through the data that we have. Future residential need, well, AMAG does on an eight-year, I'm sorry, on a four-year cycle, a regional growth plan, and in that regional growth plan, they project population going forward for a twenty-five-year period. They also project jobs growth. And so we've got that information where we can job growth rate and apply that to the non-residential current day demand, take the population growth rate, apply that to the residential current day demand. And we can grow them up into the future. It's a little bit of a simplification because we know there's new regulations in place that are trying to further reduce residential demand. So to the extent that usage per person per day is being pressed downward by the regulatory agencies, we're ignoring this, we're probably overstating residential demand based on population. We also have some special cases, you know, over here, we've got an airport building a new terminal. Um, we've got Navy, Presidio, and Coast Guard. And for the first time, we're treating them separately, and so we did a survey effort with them. Tell us your building plans, tell us what you're doing, tell us what you think you're going to need. And so for them, we're relying not on population growth, not on job creation, but on the survey answers. So we have that information, next slide. And for each jurisdiction, we were able to say, okay, here's your current demand based on a five-year average, and you see down at the bottom, it adds up to the nine thousand five hundred and fifty-seven. You can see the AMAG growth rates, the residential versus non-residential. And you can see a column that I call residential acre feet served by others, and this is basically based on all the housing elements. Where your city, uh, city of Seaside, initially, the city of Monterey said, well, we're gonna put a lot of housing over here in Old Four Door. Well, that's gonna be served by Marina Coast, so we don't care about that water, except to say, take it out of our assumptions. And then unincorporated, uh, county has kind of two parts, they've got some old four-door. But these are really things like the Ranch Canyatta Village project, which has its own supply of waters from the ranch, which has its own supply of water, so if it's not coming directly from CalMam's village supplies, we deem it as certified. So we went and did that for all of the jurisdictions. Residential growth rate based on population, non-residential water use rate based on job growth. And that's the last column, the twenty-five-year water. Next slide. And I mentioned the AMAG earlier, so this, every four-year regional growth forecast, they do three, three things. The regional growth forecast, and that's always appendix A of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is always has a fancy end like looking forward twenty forty-five, or, you know, the future, the next will probably, you know, our future twenty forty-nine, or whatever it is, but the current one is, uh, looking forward twenty forty-five, and it's based on the growth rate, and part of the, the exercise is to see if the transportation infrastructure can support the population that's deemed to be coming. Then there's the regional housing needs allocation. By law, all of these are timed on the same four-year cycle and the eight-year cycle for Reno. And in this last year, twenty twenty-two, really, AMAG assured us that the sixth cycle Reno was included in the twenty-five-year Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And it was shown to be, uh, in the twenty-five-year regional growth forecast. And what did we discover? Next slide. It wasn't. And so it's almost like somebody in one office in the same building can talk to somebody in the other office in the same building. And we had really distinctly, uh, consequential, but unexplainable differences. So you're a good example where, um, they said you're gonna get nine hundred and eighty-eight new people living in Delray Oaks. And somehow you only need a hundred and eighty-four new units of housing. Makes no sense. The opposite being true in Carmel. They said thirty-five new people, kind of makes sense. But you need three hundred and forty-nine new housing units, so the opposite, but disconnected conclusion. And we as resource managers are like, oh, what do we plan for? If Carmel builds three hundred new units, they're gonna get one of the thirty-five people. So even though we believe that people use water, empty blocks of record don't use water, homes don't use water, most people are in them. We said, well, what if these housing units got built? And we created a, a mixture of new supply of housing to reflect the housing elements, so uh, very low income, low income, moderate, above moderate. Different mixes of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, uh, three-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath. You know, whole mixture, and we assigned it to the housing elements, we said, okay, what if the houses were built and houses use water based on these numbers? Next slide. And we did do all that, this is just the total at the bottom for each Reno category, and we came up with a new total allocation of residential setting, which is different than the population growth rate on residential water use, next slide. And then we used real high-level mathematical operation when we added the two together and divided by two. And we said that's gonna be the future residential growth forecast. And as you can imagine, um, it would overstate Carmel because there's more housing than people, and it would understate Delray Oaks because there's more people than housing in the AMAG uh, forecast. But we thought it was a good measure. And so the first column of numbers is based on just job growth for non-residential, population growth for residential. The last column is where we've adjusted, we add together, divide by two, adjustment factor. Both are adjusted for water served by others. And so you can see the eight hundred and one went up to just over a thousand. So not a huge difference. But something that in our minds, we had planned. Uh, next slide. And then how much will be needed in the future, well, we just kind of got to that answer, but, um, go ahead, next. So we kind of put it down on paper like this, um, we took the twenty-five-year water need adjusted for Reno. Then we said let's only give away a third primarily for the airport and for the service boats, we said fifty percent of their survey. And then we have kind of a heartfelt moment for Delray Oaks, because when we originally did this, uh, your twenty-five-year water need was eight acre feet. And then I had a meeting with your city manager and one of your consultants. And our assumption had been about eighty-nine percent of your new housing would be out of the CalMam jurisdiction. And we said, well, you know, that could change, kind of what we talked about before the meeting, you know, Muslaj could have a change of heart, the lock down, the little city hall might decide that trying a lot of, by the nursery, something could happen. Let's assume only seventy percent was gonna be out of the CalMam service territory. And that changed the number to thirteen acre feet. When it was eight, thirty-three percent was kind of two to three acre feet. And that just looked really low. Um, so we said, let's do fifty percent of the new number, which is about six acre feet. The important takeaway is we will have more than hundreds, but over, really over eighteen hundred acre feet held and observed, so if in the CalMam service area, you were to use up your six, you know, we wouldn't wait till then, say, or going gamebusters, where we used up four acre feet. But we gave you what we think is more reasonable, also covers remodels and additions and things like that. With the promise that whichever city comes to us first can trigger another allocation discussion. But this is the proposal. Yours is highlighted in red. Monterey is accepted theirs, they sent us a nice little letter saying, thank you for our hundred and forty-one acre feet. The second, the last column is existing allocation, so some of the other jurisdictions still have water in their allocation. We really wanted to reset a start line to say ignore those old allocations, we realized really aren't, it's gonna be a point of contention with some of the other states. So we said, fine, you can keep your old allocations. Which you can see has an impact on the total, the last column. But we think this is a very good start, as I said, Monterey has even gone as far as to send us, I'd say, thank you very much, we'll work with folks. At our meeting on September twelfth, I know your city manager heard Seaside city manager saying, well, this is just the first step, and it's just a small amount of water, and you're assuming they have other water, why, why would we even care at this point? And I think that's a very good attitude, because what we've been trying to do is say, there will be orders, there will be no growth cities. Let's give everybody enough to get started with, and then see what happens. And then the second one, I think, if we get to a third, fourth allocation run where supplies are limited, then it might get contentious, but it should not be contentious at this point in time. So that's our proposal to you, um. Absent any new information, this is pretty much where we've been headed, and I'm happy to take questions.
All right, I'll start with questions with the council, down at the end, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayors, and thank you, uh, Mr. Stole, for coming over here and, uh, electing us about water. Uh, well, sometimes, uh, uh, we're always, this time, we're having our housing element, we're, uh, preparing our six-cycle housing element, and while I was uh, reading these slides and also hearing from you, at first, uh, I wanted to really like visualize how big really is the six-acre feet. Uh, like, for example, in, in units, like, you would probably have an idea, an average of consumption or, you know, of water trends for a unit, so, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so we also took your fourth and fifth cycle short calls and assumed those were also gonna be in old four-door territories.
Yes.
An acre foot typically would serve about six, um, single-family dwellings. But, um, in multi, in multifamily setting, it's typically less than, right around a tenth of an acre foot per unit. Some smaller units are eight tenths, I mean, eight one-hundreds of an acre foot. So you can, you can look at six acre feet as you know, roughly fifty housing units, we had computed in our mind that twenty-eight U's were all gonna be in the service territories, so we had to serve those. Um, many of the eight U's especially are even less than that, uh, eight one-hundreds, depending on whether, you know, how many bed or some bass size of the kitchen, like, like. So it's not a lot of housing units, but if you think of it as roughly fifty or fifty-plus, I'm not sure where you can put those in the current boundary.
So thank, thank you for that number, uh, so, so should we be concerned? Because our Riana number is hundred and eighty-four, and then right now with the allocation, we only have like fifty-plus units that we can probably build that without enough.
Well, so again, uh, keep in mind that, uh, population or house is served by others issue. By locating most of your new housing starts in the old four-door territory, that's, that's a Marina Coast water disaster problem. That's, that's a Marina coast water disaster problem, so. That water will be there, at least according to Ramshers there and my kind of part. Um, same, same issue we have in Seaside, they've got campus down, uh, front gate, uh. Many projects not being served by the water we care about, so. Under two. There, there's a divide, and. I think we have, it's like, that's Marina coast problem.
Yes, so, so, but, but thank you, really, uh, we appreciate the, the water management district for uh providing us water here and uh, you know, besides the Marina coast. Um. Okay, so I just have the another. Uh, like question, so. So considering the projected uh twenty five year water needs for Delray Oaks and the draft allocation of only six acre feet. Uh, what contingency plans does the water management district have if growth rates? On or on housing development in Delray Oaks exceed current projections?
Yeah, that's a great question, so you may remember at the outset, um, I indicated that in our view of the world, supply wise, we've got about. Two thousand five hundred and fifty nine acre feet that we could make available. Um. Any of the variability in that, we, we kind of say, well, that, that's on the. The far end, so what if it's only twenty three hundred or twenty two hundred? Right now, we're only allocating. More. So if somebody grows faster or somebody grows. Uh, higher. That's when a city is going to come back to us and say, we're running out of water. It's time for another allocation. And I think. That's the point I'm trying to get to. Which is, and it really spends more off of a cease and desist order. We really need to lift that, so you have unfettered. Access to water, so you can do large projects. I don't know that that would happen in this community, but. You know, looking at Seaside, um, the ascent project has now been renamed. They, they couldn't dump a setting meters, and. San City's large scale project in conjunction with Ameria. Same thing, they were able to set new meters because they had their own entitlement of water. But absent. The, the ability to set a meter, you're not going to be any of the reemboldened. Um, and so luckily Marina coast will tell you they can set meters, so all the housing is located in the old four door. Not a problem. Anything located here on Long Island. Is a problem until we live in the.
Uh, thank you, yes, so, um, so, uh. Other things that we need to be concerned, like us, the city council of Delray Oaks. As the guru of the water allocation here in our district, and. What should we be concerned, and then what should, like strategies that we should be really like be imparting?
Well, different cities have taken different approaches to uh. How they use water and how they prioritize water, we are very hopeful that you won't. Uh. Say, for example, restrict remodels and prioritize. Uh, only affordable multi, multi family. Um, we think that you should. You should establish your own priorities. But we, we believe there's enough water right now that. Any type of use can be accommodated. Um, the city of Seaside. Aurelion mentioned us, oh, we haven't permitted uh additional bathrooms. Because we've been. Trying to save that water for. Uh, multifamily development. Well, we want, we want to be positioning all of the jurisdictions to say, I have enough water, I don't need to hoard my water, I don't need to prioritize. Prioritize my water, I don't need pick winners and losers. We will not do that, because that's essentially a land use. And we don't want to be a land use. A soon. B, we. Have a revolt while the mayor is trying to take all of our land use story back away from us, so. It's your job to do it with priorities.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for visiting the city tonight, Mr. Stoll, uh, you know. For a very complicated matter that really is the, the heart of the matter for so many, uh. So many uh contingents and issues. Um, you've really disseminated and provided a very comprehensive, uh, easy read presentation, so I appreciate you taking the time. I was very interested in the uh Department of Defense, several military uh installations that you emphasized. Uh, admittedly, I had not considered such, even though there is a, a strong presence here on the peninsula. And my curiosity goes further as to um what their anticipated population growth, very little if any. And perhaps reductions should be the uh base real line into closures and whatnot. Uh, so I wonder what the projected uh population changes might be and how that would impact the metrics that you, that you presented. That would probably be a question better suited for my colleague, uh, our representative on the AMBAG, uh, vice mayor. You here, so uh perhaps we'll talk later. And also. And give me a halt if I'm getting too far ahead of myself and I have propensity to do so. But uh, how will, if at all, uh, desalination impact? Any of these future projections?
That, that's a very big question for which I'll have them.
And I realize, of course, there, they have to be some conditions before, before the fledgling stages.
And we have the same updated costs since two thousand seventeen, and California, the charge of cost index, uh, about forty four since then. So we know that the rate impact of the desalination plan will be significant. Right now, we have a different opinion with Calum over the need for the D cell plan and the timing. We're trying to separate those two issues, and as I've gone to kind of a separate effort right now, as I'm visiting the chambers of Congress with. Association, saying. You can live with whatever set of facts you want, the D cell is needed or it's not needed. But this is your closest. Best path to lifting more toward among years, the pure water expansion is coming, it's being built. And so we want to get started and we want to live based on that. California American really wants to hold on to this idea that, oh no, you can't lift the cease and desist order with the help of the desalination plan, so that's going to be a little bit of a battle over the next calendar. But I'll tell you, you, you can ignore that, but the realities are. If we build a D cell plan, rates will go up about fifty percent based on what. Costs we've seen. Well, that's going to further reduce consumption because of price e last visit. So from a water standpoint, it's just going to make our surplus. Large. Back in the defense institutions, um, I don't think that there's going to be much of a population change induced by. The defense establishment. Our whole goal in separating them out was, I mean, they're. They've been included in historical demand, uh attributed to the city Monterey. Coast Guard's Monterey, uh, La Mesa's technically, I think it might be unincorporated, but I think. Apart from that, everything else is. Monterey, except for parts of the Presidio over here. Um. But what we found is, as Monterey's. Allocation is getting smaller and smaller and smaller, the defense industry came in and said, hey, we want to do the naval invasion center project. City's going to say, well, we don't have any water for you, you got to come through us, and we thought that's unfair. And you mentioned base real line enclosure back in one of the backgrounds, probably. Ninety eight or early two thousands. There was a move to move uh the Defense Line Institute to uh. Fort Rockland in Arizona. And what saved the day was a lack of water in that location. And so they backed off of it, and they said, well, we'll reevaluate in a number of years, so we don't want to put. Monterey in the position of. Some grand plan at either DLI or at the Naval Postgraduate School. Oh, there's no water. That would just make it too easy to do a shutdown and realignment. So our goal is to try to keep all of those institutions here and local, which means you probably won't see a, a big fluctuation in population. You would if there was closure. Um, which just means. We overplan for water exposure, but we don't want to be in the position of underplan.
Great, thank you for uh. Answering those questions, and that's all I have, just kind of, thank you. I'll move through.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you Dave for coming here, appreciate it. Um, back to council member Hall's question about um the military, I was, I was curious about the airport and their allocation, it seems really large. I, I mean. Can you speak to that?
Well, that's why we kind of picked both of them at fifty percent, and um. We did have our people go through their. Their project list and the square footage. We also think it's a little high, but we're accepting face value the work that was put into the survey response. Um. So starting at fifty percent of what they think their future needs are. Uh, makes sense to us. Um, that being said, they have opportunity. So way back when, you may remember there was a plume on. The north side of the airport. That was, um. There, there were a bunch of wells put into mitigated, basically we pumped gas, like, uh, treated and then. Fresh stuff back in, so now the plume is gone, the. Uh. The water is still there, and we left three wells in place that work. And so they could actually use. Uh, groundwater for certain things like uh rental car washing or other purposes, so. They haven't really leveraged that opportunity as much. But they've also had ideas, um. Knocked down a bunch of the buildings on the north side of the airport and put in more modern office park type things. Um. You have an interesting relationship with the airport and the city of Monterey over certain issues. I believe that to you, but. Their requested number was vetted by my people, so you know, my people look at square footage type of use. On the residential side, they look at fixtures, showers. Uh, toilets and so forth, but on the commercial side, it's. All square footage and the type of use. Um, so yeah, they gave us a pretty department. Um, and they also still have some uh allocation left from the previous. Uh. Round, which was actually in the nineties. Um, so we're hopeful that by, by going to that fifty percent of their request. That. That we don't have to go to the other fifty percent, but we, we just.
Okay. Um, so I, I feel like I need to conceptually understand this a little bit better.
Yes.
So, um, if you look at how much water we're producing and how much we're using, you end up with about fifteen hundred acre feet per year that's available.
Yeah, really, probably twenty five hundred, and we've taken a thousand off the table.
Right, 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 for all the other potential trap years or whatever, okay. So that's every year, so, but then i- in terms of our allocation, and we get thirteen acre, acre feet. In a twenty five year period, right? But that's so every year you have fifteen hundred, let's just call it thirteen hundred, you have fifteen hundred acre feet a year available.
It, no, it's one time availability, we put it in your bank account, but instead of putting all fifteen hundred in, you said, let's start with about a third. Kind of, you know, you get fifty percent and. The airport is fifty percent, but it was roughly a third, I. Yeah, three hundred and seventy one acre feet out of the fifteen hundred. So. That gets put into everyone's different accounts.
But you, but you produce that in a year.
No, well, so every year. The supply is available. But as you build a new home, that new home is going to use its piece of it every year, so when I give you. Thirteen acre feet, as you begin to build. Then those homes are now part of the permanent demand, so the demand is, is now going up year by year by year. So eventually. Demand here on the whole peninsula. Would grow to the point where it equals supplies, supplies like a flat line, twelve hundred, twelve thousand acre feet per year available. But demand every year is increasing. As you build, as new people move here, and so that thirteen acre feet. Is parceled out. And it will go into climb each building permit.
Okay. Um, so that water is based off the expansion that'll come online in a year. When, when do you plan on releasing this allocation with jurisdictions?
Uh, February, if um everything goes well. But then you're faced with. Uh. It'll be what we call paper water, it's not wet water until we flip the switch on plan. So we would encourage you not to issue large scale permits. Based on your allocation, um. I, I won't say we didn't consider a worthy project, because it, you may remember, I, I mentioned. Demand this last year was about a hundred and forty acre feet lower than the prior year. So every year we've been saving a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more, so that's actually freed up a little bit of room in the, on the demand side. So if someone came with a, you know, an affordable housing project. And the wet water wasn't coming out of the expansion yet. If they needed an acre foot, we'd take a, we'd give it to them, they'll sign off on it, but what we. Really attempted to do with this was to. Allow, for example, the city of Monterey to tell. Brad Slama that, yes, there will be water. If you want to get start, started today on a large project, by the time you finish it, we will have this water. Um, but our properties. Don't start using it until it's. Coming out of expansion.
Right, right. Okay. Um. Yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, so just to clarify, these allocations that you're talking about now are in effect immediately, right?
February. Okay, so we have to go through an ordinance process, but.
Okay, okay, and just to remind everyone here, if you're watching online, this is only for existing meters, so residential properties or commercial properties. That already have a meter. Could potentially get an allocation, and not, this doesn't apply to land that has no meter on it. That'll, that'll only go into effect when the cease and desist order is lifted. Can you talk a little bit about that? So the petition for modification, what timeframe is going to be presented to the resource board?
Yep. So our, our hope, um, they do not need to have a hearing. They may want to have a hearing, or they may want to have a public workshop. Um, the way it's intended to work is evidence of a permanent replacement water supply has been provided. And then they assess that evidence, and they actually have the authority, the deputy director of water rights has the authority. To send a letter that says we hereby lift the CDO. It's not going to happen that way, because it's a huge issue, so they'll, as I mentioned, they'll either go public workshop or even a hearing. All of the board members will want to know this is going on, so they won't just do it at a staff level internal. Uh, review type of situation. So we will meet with them informally, when I say them, I mean both staff and state board members. January, possibly in early February. We will tell them what we're going to show them. Um, we will tell them the conclusions of what we're going to show them in advance. Uh, and then we will tell them that we do expect to file a petition. The petition itself will probably be more like March. And then we'll go back and meet with everybody formally. And say, now you've seen what we've sent. The thing that we're holding on to right now is. At the Public Utilities Commission. About seven parties have been involved in what's called phase two of. The proceeding to. Uh, basically sign on to the water Monterey expansions, phase one was signage of the water purchase agreement, that's happened. That enabled us to start construction, phase two was. For the Public Utilities Commission to revisit. Supply and demand numbers. And they didn't say what their conclusion or what their reason was, but it would make you believe it's to kind of reaffirm the need for a D cell plan or not. So we've been waiting for that proposed decision to come out, and we've been waiting really since July. And. One could say it's either hung up because they're also in the midst of a three year rate case. Process. It needs to get out of the way first. Or they're hung up because you've got five parties. who independently have said supply and demand looks like this and they're all very close together and we're one of those five parties. And then you have one party over here that says, oh, no, demand looks like this and supply looks like this. And so there's a crisis, the penalty will be solved with the DSO plan. So maybe that they're having trouble reconciling those two together. We don't know, but it's been delayed. So having the Public Utilities Commission weigh in on supply and demand makes it so that the state water board doesn't have to. Part of the reason we were giving state water board as much time as we intended to was in case they have to look at the numbers. So we'd like this piece of the Public Utilities Commission to be resolved so that state board doesn't have to look at the numbers. We still want to give them enough time in case they do. The important thing is something I said earlier, we're trying to separate the need for the DSO plan, pro or con, from lifting of the moratorium and the CDO moratorium because that can happen now. The twenty conditions that were alluded to may not get cleared for another two years. Could be three, which means you're not going to see a desalination plan for four years, could be five. And so we want to lift this moratorium now. We, you know, it's not as much a problem for you guys, but City of Monterey has a rating number of three thousand six hundred and fifty four, roughly, new housing units. Most of those are raw land or exceed the capacity of an existing meter on a existing site. They can't get started without lifting the moratorium. Same thing in Seaside. I don't think Carmels is worried about it. But anyway, it's it's imperative that we lift the moratorium. And so whatever story we have to ice together, may or may not include the existence of the DSO plan, but it will certainly include no trespass for four years and unlikely to trespass just based on the expansion for another four to ten years. Your respective of what happens after ten years. So that's that's our next fight.
Okay, that 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 helps. My next question is about the source water for the the expansion plant. And I know that's up to M one Ws to secure that. But I always like to ask, what what's your level of confidence in the source water?
Yeah, it's did you go to the city managers thing on Friday?
No.
Okay. County Water Resources Agency did a presentation to city managers on Friday. Included slides six, eighteen, and twenty that we had particular disagreement with. Calling into question the viability of the source water. And my response is kind of two-fold. One is we had to enter into a water purchase agreement that isn't discretionary. It's not, well, this year was a tough year, so we only delivered this and other years were great years, so we'll look a look for that. It's, we deliver twenty two fifty acre feet, two two thousand two hundred and fifty acre feet every year, or we're going to be in breach. And there's financial penalties for breach. We would not have entered into that contract unless we were highly confident that we can produce and deliver two thousand two hundred and fifty acre feet every year. Do I have reservations in drought years? Yeah, I do a little bit. So we need to rely on reserves and stored water possible. So we wouldn't have entered into the contract versus like more highly confident. And then number two, the the two areas that have been attacked, one being pure water Monterey expansion, source waters. The one entity who controls the operations and owns it and has data systems on all the flows, knowing what comes in and what comes out is Monterey one mark. And we're being told by a party that has no dog and hunt that, oh, that's not reliable data. And we're being told by another party of, oh, well, you can't rely on that forever because we may need it back for signal purposes in the valley. But we do know what we have contractual rights to. And we do know that if they were to blow up the current contract, that the six cities who now depend on Pure Water Monterey for, you know, over fifty percent of their supply, we probably rethink their commitment to give it to the growers for recycled water for the Castro C R intrusion product. So the options to take water back from peninsula to serve the needs of the valley are very, very limited. So arguments that are based on, well, we might take back, really don't hold true to to us. And so we're we're highly confident there are business risks. I think we don't, we tend not to take the produce wash water very much, but we could. We tend to take it more when the city of Salinas says, oh, we've got a problem, can you take it? And so we will treat it sometimes. We'll take it only to the level to deliver to the growers. So if there's a drought period. So that being said, it's a source that if we lost it, we were already kind of operating as if we don't use it. Time phosphates can create some problems. So of the water that we control, we have enough. If if one party wanted to aggregate a contract, then everything's backed up the grabs and we have more than enough water in the six cities. So these potential issues don't worry me as much. Just because we can think it doesn't mean it's going to happen. But we we examined the data very thoroughly before we committed to a deliberate requirement. Because we don't really like to be in breach, you know, right away and subject to penalties.
Okay, thank you for that. What I'd like to do now is take it out to the public. If you have any questions or comments, you can ask those questions or make those comments where you are. That's fine. But I'll open up public comments.
I just have a fair, I'm not sure what you meant when you said trespass. You you mentioned that a couple of times and that just would. So I really don't know what you meant on that.
Yeah, it's it's an interesting word. So there is a state water code. You know, our state has labor codes, construction codes. So there's a state water code in section one oh five two defines trespass. And trespass is if you were taking water from a a surface water source of the state for which you don't have a legal right, then you are trespassing. And so they call it trespassing. It just means you're taking water you shouldn't be taking.
Any other public comment or question? A couple of comments is closed. So based on this process as a city, the next step for us is basically creating a policy where, you know, we look at growth, we look at priorities and so on. And that's something that down the road, the the city manager will will pull together, the staff will have the opportunity to to talk about absolutely in a in a public forum to create that policy forward. And city manager, would you like to say anything?
Well, that's exactly right. We'll probably start with planning commission, start those discussions about setting priorities. As Mr. Spall mentioned, well, hear from the community and hear from you all on how you want to go about allocating water, what projects you want to look for from that. I have my ideas, but I'll state those for now. And then also just like to thank Dave and his staff for working with us. They were very receptive and listening to our needs and understand why our housing element was crafted, the way it was crafted, and why we included certain areas for development and didn't include others. But now there's potential for future water. That opens up opportunities for us that weren't contemplated in our housing element are now available to us. So thanks, Dave.
I'm sorry I went on so long. Now, always a fun topic. And thank you once again. Really appreciate you taking the time to be here and provide the information. Okay, I'll move on to consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the council would like to pull? See none from the public? Any items that you'd like to pull? Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
So moved. Okay.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to old business. And that is receiving a presentation on short term rental and T O key tax. City manager.
So you all remember that you approved the placement of better R on the ballot to increase the transient occupancy tax. You can see here in a screenshot, the most recent numbers. Overwhelming majority of the community supported the increase. And as such, since I see that as a mandate from our community, I wanted everyone to know that we're moving on this and we're not going to sit on it. This'll, as I talked about, when we brought this forward to you all for consideration, you know, our revenue streams are narrow and they're impacted by downturns in the economy. This is not a new revenue stream. This is just an expansion of a revenue stream that has grown in the community. It has become one of our top revenue providers for our general fund. This new money that will be coming in will go specifically to the general fund. That's how this was crafted, which means it's available every year for the city council to allocate for general services that we provide on an annual basis. But there's opportunity to talk about how we use this because it is a little bit more money depending on how how we go forward and what the increase is. And it's still conservatively about thirty thousand dollars is what we're looking at in additional revenue. That's conservative, but we like to be conservative on the budget. So one of the areas that we're looking in into utilizing some of this additional funding, Karen has been doing a great job researching some of the tools that are out there to help us manage our program more effectively and more efficiently and and really free up staff who are tasked with managing the short term rental program now focus on other services to the community and utilize a a website or software component that would do the work for us, be more effective, and hopefully reward and maximize our revenues. So I borrowed some stuff from one of the companies that Karen's been working with. Mayor and I both talked with this in this particular company when we were at the California Cities Conference. Just to get an idea of what's out there. And then we'll be looking for several different options and then bringing that that back to the council for your consideration. But some of the things that they do is like discovery and recovery. So that's looking out. And so right now, staff goes and they just go through websites and Airbnb and look and see if if anybody's advertising, if they're advertising inappropriately, if they're advertising and they don't have a license. This would be an automated system that we would purchase a license for and they would do the work for us and they would look for it. And then they go, if they find somebody and we have availability and a license, they have a risk cap. They go, they talk to the people and they try and they bring them into compliance. And so then we have a business that's operating effectively and paying their fair share and doing everything above board. But then, and then compliance, same thing. They're just doing the police work that right now really Karen does and Laura helps. And actually, it's it's kind of fun. We all kind of jump in and try to, but it's actually a bit too much fun when somebody's not acting above board. Frequently what we find is that they're not actually in Delray Oaks, they're advertising Delray Oaks, that they're in one of the neighboring jurisdictions and say that they're here to certain amount of penalties regulations. But Revenue Administration, they they would help with the collection of the T O T. They do the audits every year to ensure that we're getting all of the T O Ts to the city. So there's potential. I don't know how much potential there is here. You know, I've talked with Karen and and so far, we're fairly confident that all of them short term rental operators in Delray Oaks are good business people and are good partners with the city. And we haven't ever seen any evidence of anybody trying to withhold T O T or bunch of numbers or anything, but we're not experts at that. I hire somebody who is an expert at that and and can help us. And if if people are not paying the full T O T to us, they'll help get that for us. So could could end up improving our revenue stream. And then they also do the the oversight for us on complaints. If there's resident complaints, they're willing to work with the operators of the short term rentals to make sure that somebody responds to it, that they respond to it timely, that they're operating within the guidelines of the ordinance. And so that's been a huge drain on staff and having to deal with constituent complaints and neighbor complaints. And then working with the business owners on addressing those complaints in a timely manner. So if we get somebody to take that off the staff's plate, I said, staff will be more efficient than other service area service delivery. So that's what we're looking at. I I know what people will say, may say, is other cities earmark some of their T O T for projects in the neighborhoods, for beautification projects, art installation projects. Those are all great opportunities. But those are also larger jurisdictions where they benefit a lot more from T O T and from tourism. And so the T O T is above and beyond what their general service needs are. So they have that flexibility. That's obviously something that we'll bring back to you for you all to talk about and consider. And and I find that but that being said, when I brought this to you all, the intent was that this would increase our revenue and and help with stability of our revenue streams and stability of our finances. And annually, we all consider what our resources are for the next upcoming year. And then I make recommendations to staff, but I make recommendations and you all tell us what your priorities are and you give the direction on where you want to go with the resources we have on an annual basis. I think that that's a good way to handle it. Going forward, in good years, we will have that flexibility to use that money for projects in the in the neighborhoods for beautification projects and for art installations, things like that. But I think setting aside a percentage as a policy becomes tricky because then we're more in mean years and we need to rely on this increased revenue source to maintain mandated services like policing and public works. You think it's always hard to take something back once you've given it out. And so setting up a percentage, you know, it could be tricky. It's not impossible, but you see what happened in Monterey. Ten years ago, they tried to claw back some of the neighborhood improvement fund. If you're up in Portland, we'll have to say, no, it would be a difficult discussion for the community. So we'll we'll get more into that as we go forward with this and actually start to see what the revenue business. And we have time to talk with some of these providers. I have some ideas. I want to talk about specifically about maybe the cost of scale getting their costs down a little bit because they're a little pricey. But so stay tuned, maybe in February. I have something ready to talk with you all about. So but I wanted everybody to know, I really appreciate the community support for this and we're moving on. So that's all right.
Thank you, city manager. I'll start with Mike, who you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment with the seventy six percent of the voters saying yes increasing our T O T is really like would show our shared vision of a brighter future for Delray Oaks. And I would like to really thank to each one of you, our neighbors, our residents, the city, the city hall staff and the council for really like working hard for this. And this victory is really like for all of us. And I thank you for for this because I'm very excited that we have additional resources in order we can provide more better services in our community. So thank you.
Right. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I from the outset, I believe this was a very prudent effort and we'll have this measure passed to benefit the city in in many ways. I would, without even knowing the cost associated with such services and support, think that the increase and the rough estimate of thirty thousand dollars or so will do well to cover those costs. And as you mentioned, alleviate staff efforts and make it, then be able to prioritize those efforts on. and make it then be able to prioritize those efforts on on other matters. I too would be inclined to not begin to even think or to appropriate these funds in any other way to cover the affirmation costs. And any residuals, if any, to trickle into and bolster the general fund. Would be that be in the best interest of the city or wrong. So thank you for your work on this. Thank you, fellow council members. Job well done. And thank you to our community for supporting our proposed measure.
Council member Sherwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for presenting on this. And yeah, really, I am really happy this passed. This is a nice, will be a nice addition to our revenue. What like, how much is this? Because this program looks great. I think I I love the idea of of them not having to spend time, even though it might be fun, great doing the detective work. But I like the idea that they could, they would be collecting the tax. So it just seems like it would alleviate a lot of the work from our staff. How much would we pay for something like this?
But that's what we're looking at and trying to figure out, you know. It's like a car, what trend level do you want? And how many of the services do we really need as a community? And ballpark, we're looking around fifteen to sixty thousand dollars a year. Depending on what level of service you want, which service provider you're going with. There may be opportunity with the mayor that I know of a lot of them. We also met, we're talking with them also with the city manager from San City. So there may be an opportunity to do a joint thing in economy scale. If they sign off the three years and we sign on for three years, then they reduce the rate. Karen has negotiated with one of them that they would consider. There's also an installation fee of fifteen thousand dollars. And if we sign off for a three year contract or five year contract, then they'll waive that. So there's opportunities.
Okay, so it's not going to take the entire thirty thousand.
No, no, well, we wouldn't go with that sort of.
Okay, good. I was just curious, when when does this go into effect? January? So and we're going to fall percent. Yeah, so, yeah, okay. And so, well, how are we notifying the the S T R, or is it letter been brought in January or has it already gone?
It hasn't, but that's.
It hasn't, but we will be.
Right, and I have a greater opportunity.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, this is new for the city. And so we're figuring all this out, what we need to do to make sure that this gets in, we have to notify the third half under it. So Karen's will be figuring all that out.
Yeah, because since we're relying on the the owners to provide their T O T, we want to make sure that they.
We've actually had owners call us to let us know what they plan on doing. So it is good. They they knew about this.
Yeah, okay, good.
They're an analysis, probably making sure that the dog or has across all her teams.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Thank you, Alex. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I I too like the idea of bringing up staff to focus on other things. And really, we don't know the extent of a potential issue out there. I think it's it's prudent for us upfront to find out, hey, maybe we don't have a problem. It's okay. And and or we have a bigger problem, have someone come in and and do that. And maybe down the road, we don't necessarily, you know, need to have that service, you know, who knows? But I think figuring out, you know, the the first step in the in the problem solving process and define the problem. So we'd be able to define the problem based on what this contract with agency would come back with. And then in terms of the funds for T O T, it'll go to the general fund, as the city manager was saying. And then the finance committee has the opportunity to take a look at that and see if we want to allocate in 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 certain places before it comes to the council. So based on that and what staff input is, we will make that recommendation in our finance committee. If we want to use those additional funds in certain areas outside of the enforcement process. So that's that's kind of the way that it would ultimately come to the council to be decided upon. So I just want to say that as well. And those are my comments. I don't have any questions. I'll take it out to the public. Any comments or questions?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman, I'm here. Here just quickly, a couple things. A just that I know what you guys say, get it off the back. I have some personal insight into what that burden can be and I know, yeah, they can be, it's pain. And I don't know, I may have a big problem, but there are things out there that probably need to be looked into, be aware of. The other thing I wanted to mention though was also some for us to think about, maybe start with the fine commission. But when we pass the law, you know, we were trying, the big problem was we didn't want it to explode in numbers and have to deduct to the government, bring it back. So we tried to get ahead of problems. We did. I think we got a great balance. One thing we didn't think about was density. And my recently got my mother in law the last couple of years and we got a deer flash. We were here to, one of the rail, since she's down in Portola, moved in, there's Airbnb, you know, the S T R right next to her. She knew that. That's fine. The last year, she moves in, you buy the house on the other side and turn that into an Airbnb. So now she's sitting in the middle of two of them. And just some for us to maybe talk about this because I know the way you said it broke down because you know, there was just kind of painful, that whole process they went through, we clawed it back a little bit. They put it in exclusionary zone, basically within a property lines of a S T R, you can't have another one than fifty five feet, which basically would preclude what she's at, you know, eating sandwiched in between two. So it's something for us to think about, not never necessarily a gravity part, but just some of the film play maybe in our pop star at the commission, maybe we can discuss that. Maybe that's the turn. They will help us out with that one, too. Yeah, get it off their backs. That's, like I said, I've got some insight into that. I know I'm going to give up. Mrs. Cradens and W. So thanks. All right, thank you.
Any other public comments?
I have a quick question. How do you get to the number, I I think it's twenty five permits in the city for the short term rentals? Is that correct?
Run, okay.
Whole house?
For a whole, for a whole home.
Okay, so how did you come to that number? Not fifty or thirty? I mean, how did you come to the number of twenty five?
Yeah, we can, I can talk with you afterwards, might give you that complete, the rationale we used and how we came up with that number.
Okay.
I'll be, yeah, afterwards.
Sure. Live twelve so easy, why don't we go for fourteen?
Any other public comment? Okay, I've seen none. Bring it back to the council. Any other questions, comments on this? Okay, I'll move on to the next item, which is new business, which award the contract authorized the city manager to sign an agreement with coastal paving with an amount of four hundred and ten plus thousand dollars with fifteen percent contingency for Rose, Rosita Road repair. City manager.
Thank you. So normally this is an item that would be on consent. Contract awards like this typically are on consent. But these are kind of new projects for this community and they're big and they're intrusive and they're going to cause some traffic problems. Thanks. That would be a good idea to just put it on here as a way to call everybody's attention to it. Some people are paying attention. I know everybody's aware of obstruction in the city now because there's a lot of obstruction going on in the city. But this is a good one. This is something that's has has great potential to become a real problem for us. So this is the emergency, the project for the emergency road repair on Rosita Road. For those of you who live on that side of the hill and drive that way, you see it all the time. It's getting a little scary with the erosion on the creek and the slippage of the roads. And this will address that. It was great. We actually had seven contractors respond to the bid. The low bidder was coastal paving at four hundred and ten, four hundred and ten. Normally for extension project like this, it's typical to do a ten percent to twenty percent contingency. Sherman, our engineer, felt like fifteen was planning for this one. It is project of potential for things to creep in and unexpected things, but it's not a really big project. So I think fifteen is going to be plenty for that. So that one, no.
Okay, or vice versa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question regarding the project timeline and when will this be starting and how long? And then also the quality assurance, if there are some measures that we have put into making sure that the quality of the project and also the disruption management, as you have also mentioned, John, like how can we really like minimize the disruption for our residents? And 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 if this project will also include some sustainability measures, meaning when we want to make sure that the project will really last long, so that we won't be redoing this for a long time. Yeah, so that's all. Thank you.
Sure. The mayor, the so the timeline right now tentatively is to start work in January. Mainly because the holidays were in the holiday period, but that's continued on weather. And so we'll see whether or not this is going to be a winter or if we're going to have to retrieve that. We'll be coastal paving, we'll be making the call now with Sherman and Low, but I just want everything to be safe. Yeah, as far as sustainability, yeah, this has been engineered to be done right and to last for a long time so that we don't have to revisit. We are going to do some other I'd like eventually to do something on that road that'll help mitigate some of this stuff that has been caused. Maybe doing a sidewalk on the creekside, Rosita, so that people have a way to walk up and down there that's safe, but it also moves the traffic up the hill, the hillside and off of the creekside. So we don't have all the weight on that side. But also that little curve that's in the middle of the road that uses the sight line as you're coming down. We're going to take that out and we're going to fix that with strength. So that'll help move traffic eastward and away from the creek for sustainability. That answer all your questions? Yeah, oh, well, project management, yeah, yeah. So that'll be Sherman and Ron. They'll be watching all of that. But as part of, this is a federally funded project and so as part of the federal funding, there is a quality assurance component to it that we had to agree to that Sherman and Low, our city engineers in charge of managing for us.
That's good. Thank you, John.
Okay, council member Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say, I'm pleased to see this project going forward. It's been a matter of concern on our side of the canyon here. Noticeable slipping for some time. No, I've looked over. I'm glad we had such a deep bidding pool that so many parties were interested. I can speak from vocational experience in coastal paving, although they came in below us. Have equally comparable quality of workmanship to some of the higher bidders. So I think that that's a great choice. And I have seen again in my experience great measures in safety and traffic control. And I think that in conjunction with our city engineer, Mr. Low and our public works manager, Ron Fuji, that this will be a smooth and least impactful process for the community as possible. And so that is what we have, just glad to see this moving forward.
I think council member Sherwood.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John, for this. So does this bid include the sidewalk? Because I really like that idea.
It does. No, because it's federally funded, it was only for emergency repairs. And so any additional work, we have to separate from this project.
Are we tagging on and just like, oh, they're out there?
Yeah, I, I, yeah. It would be great to be able to do that stuff, an intermealing thing with federal funding, which is very tricky.
Okay, well, that I guess that's my next question is because this came under the amount that we were granted from D M A. So what what's, what do we do with the other portion? Or is that going to, because was that entire portion meant to be used for this project?
It is, and some of it will go to cover the city's costs for construction management and for Sherman's time from design.
Oh, right, okay.
And so, but yeah, it's a reimbursement project. So we don't.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, so whatever it costs, because we also have a seventy four thousand dollar battery.
Right, right.
And so whatever is left is better.
Got it, okay. And then I'm going to go back to council member Lee's question in terms of the time. I know on that contract there's supposed to be a date, like it starts this date and then it ends on this date. There were no dates filled in on that contract. So I was just wondering, you said it's going to start in January. How long do we expect this project to last?
That's a good question. That's a question for Sherman. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here. I don't, I don't anticipate this going to be very long. Do you know?
I don't know.
Do you know, Vince?
I think it's about thirty days.
Thirty days.
Oh, really?
Thirty, very worth it.
Oh, good. Okay.
That's the man who knows.
Okay, excellent. Oh, that's great. Okay, that's good. This seems silly, but in in the packet, talks about a rolled curve. That curved curve, which is different than the curve on the other side, which is a ninety degree curve. Are they, are the curves not going to match?
Yeah, they're going to match.
They will match?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
But you have there now is a rolled curve.
Right.
Right.
But so but on the on the east side, it's not a rolled curve, correct? You just did it.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, correct.
So it'll be a rolled curve on the west side, any, I don't know what you call a curve that's not vertical.
Correct. So you're a vertical curve on the, you have, you have vertical curve on the other side of the road and you have the rolling curve in gutter on the on the downside. So if you don't mind, can you come on up to the podium for a quick look in here? Oh.
I was afraid of you. My name is Victor Davy and I'm the senior estimator at Coastal Paving Excavating, so.
Okay. So it's like a roll curve, like so, so I was just curious if the curves on the west and the east side are going to match?
No.
Not that it makes it.
I don't recall what's on the east side, but the west side is a roll curve and it's going to be replaced in time. So.
Right, okay.
Which I believe was a requirement of the grant.
Okay, so I see that looks like that. Got it, okay.
Majority works down in the bottom, next to the creek there, which is because of the wintertime, going to make work difficult and challenging, I should say, maybe not difficult, but if we we do have with winter, it could hamper the completion of the project. So something to keep in mind.
All right, thank you.
Well, were there any other comments that you would like to make?
No, I was here to kind of observe and answer questions. So I'm glad I had a chance to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate you being here. Sure, yeah, yeah. Okay. I mean, coastal paving, we've done, we've had a partnership with them in the past. They've always done good work for us. I know Ron has worked with them in the past as well. Always speaks highly of coastal paving and the work that you do. And I don't see this being any different. I too like the idea of the sidewalk and, you know, I guess I'm trying to get a better understanding the the project that we have now, the the capability and potential to put in sidewalk later will still be there after they, so it's something that that we can add to the project without a lot of, I guess, modifications, right? Okay, that's perfect. That's I I guess all we get asked for at this point. Okay. I'll take it out to the public. Any public comments or questions regarding this item? All right.
Let's have a sidewalk if we can. I agree.
Okay, any other comments? If seen them, I'll bring it back to the council and I'll accept a motion for this item.
And we've been awarded contract and authorized the city manager to sign the agreement with coastal paving and excavating on the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ten, plus a fifteen percent contingency for Rosita Road emergency repair project. Oh, I second.
If we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is staff report and I'll give it to the city manager.
All right, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Man, like you all got the A barn, right? But you've read it. It's a great read. It's focusing on the future. And and all the things, good things that are happening today that are going to benefit the future of the community. Laura has really, she really sank her teeth into this and took it over. That's why it looks so great. So she and Karen, when Karen was home with a broken foot, they were. That's why it looks so great. Uh, so she and Karen, when Karen was home with a broken foot, they were both working uh via phone and computer and. Yeah, very good.
That's gonna be great, Jim.
Um, so that's great. Um, so speaking of of the future, you know, the staff have been working a lot on. Uh, you know, for, well, for the last three years, but a a lot, especially now, for those of you who come in and see the staff on a regular basis. Um, and the new staff that we have and some of the new assignments and giving up jobs and looking at the services that we provide and have, write better services. Um, you know, the acorn is an aspect of that, but better communication. Um, and training and starting to professionalize the services and the staff and their understanding of of. Government administration and not relying so heavily on consultants for that work as we have in the past. Uh, so we've been making great strides on that. Uh, the office is humming. Uh, if you come in, you'll see there's a lot of activity. Uh, usually Stacy is at her desk with headphones on, on Zoom. Learning payroll and and accounts payable and getting that back from R G S. And Laura is greeting everybody at the door and helping them with their permits and helping them with whatever. And Karen just sits in the back office and you can take credit for it all.
Really?
Right?
Yes.
Rest on both morals. Um, but yeah, so uh there's been a lot of work, uh, a lot of it is really kind of behind the scenes. But I wanna make sure that everybody uh is really aware of of the strides that we've made in in the administrator. Functions of their city and and just improve services and like I said, for those of you who interact regularly in city hall and come in. Little short-term rental operators, for our business operators, who come in and and deal with the staff on a regular basis. Say, I hear universally from everybody, just uh, you know, it was always great to work with the staff at the city of Delray Oaks. But even more so now, um, in in the service and somehow amazingly, we actually get things done faster. Which is great. Um, and then obviously, you see everything that's happening in Poa Works Round. Uh, Ron is out there jumping, we keep him jumping, I don't know how he keeps a smile on his face because he has a million things to do. Um, so seeing out there, they can burn what he's doing because he's staying on top of all of this work that you see going on in the city. And uh, you know, there's a lot, a lot that's happening uh in the city, um, more than has happened really honestly for decades. Uh, especially all on time, and so uh we appreciate the patience of the community and and. Uh, the willingness to work with staff and and, you know, understand the vision and where we're going with all of this. Um, but uh also appreciate the staff, because uh this is a lot that they're dealing with. Um, and then. I don't really have anything to present on development. Uh, it's boring stuff, it's still negotiation. Um, just to say that we are making, well, it's hard to calculate at this point what progression means on the development front, because. That is a complicated piece of property out there and so. As little, we actually understood what's out there, the developer didn't really understand, so they're learning about what that parcel is, what all the aspects are. What all the roadblocks are in, or development, what potential development could even look like. Um, so that's the due diligence phase. We're learning, they're learning. Um, so we're having to show grace on both sides. Uh, we have limited resources, so there are some, you know, we were ambitious when we did the E R N. We put some timelines in for things that uh they were required for them on. And some, a lot of that is contingent on our ability to get them information and to work with them, and we have limited resources, so. Um, you know, we have to be, you know, mindful of that as those deadlines come and go. Uh, but as long as we're making progress, I think we all wanna keep going with this and and uh so that's, that's the way we're going. Um, I think we're getting to a point where they're getting the handle on what uh. What kind of biological studies are gonna have to happen out there, what kind of environmental studies are gonna have to happen out there? What's the likelihood for being able to do developments, uh, certain types of development? Um, and once they have a good handle on. First of all, whether or not development's possible out there and whether or not they're the right people to do it, then we'll start talking about community meetings. Um, so far, they're great. They're saying, saying all the right things. They wanna come and they wanna talk to the community. Before they even have an idea what development would look like out there, because they wanna hear from the community and what you all want this to look like. And then they can start to formulate, when they start to think about what can actually be done out there, how they can incorporate in from the community. Because it doesn't work for them, it doesn't work for the community. They, at the end of the day, they wanna make money and less uh pushback from the community and less problems in that realm. Means they can get the development done faster, which means they can make money faster and have less problems, so. Uh, um, that's my opinion on how to help for sure. They might tell you a little differently, but then they they're in for money to say all of their businesses. Um, and but they're, they're very interested in meeting with the community. Eyes wide open and not dictating to the community. They want to get input on, do we want trailer or where do we want parts back and stuff? And then they'll factor that into any proposals that they then threaten for council or by commission consideration. So we are making progress on that front. Um, South Family Road, that's key to getting development done out there. Uh, no updates on that, that's still on development. You know, the environmental review process for that takes a long time, uh, the biological studies. Uh, Aaron from D B N A was working on those, those have to be done at certain times of the year. Um, so hopefully by January, February, I'll be able to have, you know, where we're all followed that, because we'll have a better handle on what that's all starting to look like. Uh, so developer, our designer, our environmental, so stay tuned.
Okay, yeah, just one thing to add to that. When we get to the point where the developer uh wants and is looking for that community feedback. Um, what the city manager and I uh were, have been talking about is having something similar to what we did before. The uh development open house down Moose Lodge, a lot of folks like that, got a lot of good feedback from it. So we'll be looking at doing something very similar to that on the time it's right. Okay, um, council reports and correspondence are in the packet. Our next meeting is December seventeen. At six o'clock and with that, we are adjourned.